Individual ordinances. Number three was Article Three, Table Three, which was Dimensional Requirements. And that had to do with, yeah setbacks. And, and then Article Four, Specific Activities. And if you would, please, if you turn to the Table Three.
Page?
What page? I'm sorry.
Nineteen.
I appreciate it. In that, in that table, through a lot of, I guess, practice and experience over time, it became a priority with the board to look at those setbacks and change as appropriate. And if you look at the table, where we had forty foot in the road is now twenty foot, and those are the, the first five zones. And setbacks that were twenty are changed to ten. Those are kind of the highlights of what we did there. So basically, we're changing setbacks to make them smaller. Something we ran into last week, we had three properties that were shoreline properties that they wanted to put foundations under. And it struck us while we were there looking at those properties. As you know, if you look at shoreline properties in our community, many of the shorelands properties have right of ways going through, whether it be a association road, a private road, or a town road. And the current, the current table had forty feet for a setback, and there are cases where you could actually move back, in the case where someone's putting a new foundation in, but then you're restricted by the setbacks. So you're kind of caught between trying to fix a problem in the front on the shoreline, and you're restricted on the back, or required to go to the appeals board to have it changed, and so on. So that's one of the positive things about this change relative to that. So I've kind of hit the highlights. I welcome any questions you may have. And I've got a good team here with me. I thank the board for being here with us. Helping to answer those questions.
I have a couple. Just, I noticed throughout the red line version that you had in here, you changed a lot of the shoreline zoning to shoreline district. Shoreland districts instead of zones, just a terminology.
Okay. I think, I think I always say zone, doesn't it, versus the district?
Okay. Oh, I'll look at that after. Yeah. There's this one that I noticed. And then, so Article Four, under the Performance Standards, I was just looking at the, the DEP being available. I think it was Article Four, number twelve, E nine A. Yeah. With the having DEP onsite, I think it was for the erosion control. And so I didn't know if that has something that had been tested, if, to call DEP as far as being onsite anytime that there's excavation. I feel that that could present an issue for any landowners that are trying to do a construction project and having DEP there onsite that day. Have we reached out to anybody from DEP just to see what availability? So I have that under Article Four, number twelve, E nine A, under the Performance Standards. Page twenty-one. Thank you.
You're talking about A?
Yes. Yes. Under nine A, "A person certified in erosion control practices by the main department of environmental protection shall be responsible for management of erosion and sedimentation control practices at the site. This person shall be present at the site each day these activities occur for a duration that is sufficient to ensure that proper erosion and sedimentation control practices are followed. This is required until installation of erosion and sedimentation control measures that will either stay in place permanently or stay in place. And then the second part B, that they will be, to include that name and certification in the process."
And so you think that's too restrictive?
I mean, I do. I personally do. I didn't know if that was something that we've tested as far as reaching out to DEP to see if people are available for any excavation project that we have going.
You're understanding that's a DEP person?
Yes.
No, it's a trained person.
Trained.
Most of your contractors that are, that are working around these situations are trained in doing that. And so that's the person we're talking about.
Okay. So do we have a list of people like that? That people can contact?
Mark, I think Mark works with them on a regular basis.
He refers them out?
Yeah. There is a list, yes.
Have spoken with them? Do they have time to add? Because we don't want to make it prohibitive for somebody to do the erosion control, and they don't need the setbacks. I know how it is to get the plumbing inspector out, and that can be difficult. And I see this as another barrier to slow down the process significantly.
My sense in,
do something.
My sense in practice is, is that this is how the business is run. It's not a new thing. Okay.
I think it would be great if they, there's, we have enough people that we know that they can actually come and do this. They can be hired. Because if they have to be there every day onsite, that's a pretty big commitment, if you ask me.
I think what we, Andy?
I think that this is overly restrictive. Well, I understand that contractors now falling to be certified, but this has person present at the site each day these activities occur. That means that the contractor certified, you can't have his employees there working once he is. That's the literal interpretation which you wrote.
So let us take that and,
also it doesn't cover, should a homeowner choose to do the work itself? Okay, you're taking that readily from the whole.
Right. Well, let's take your input and your concerns and, and take it back and massage it as appropriate to make it fit what you're, you're thinking.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Other questions?
On page twenty-seven, same that carries conditions. Stating that seventy-five feet a minimum and the three, a deep piece in a minimum lot frontage of fifty feet. I don't know, that sounds a little like this is the specimen of wastewater and sewage. On page twenty-seven, and then looking at your revised form, which decreased minimum lot frontage of fifty feet, what happens if you have a septic system or you don't have public sewer or bar? I guess that's my question.
Anybody want to venture? Oh, go ahead.
So we have to be at least as restrictive as the state. If we want, we can be more restrictive, but, but my understanding is historically that the town generally has followed Chapter One Thousand. And I, this says that you have to meet seventy-five feet, and that's dictated by the state.
Okay. But you have to follow the state rules, correct?
Correct.
So we've got a, a minimum frontage of fifty feet if I struck a, a little house or a trailer there, a large floor home. Does that fall within the state requirement for minimum distance?
Well, this is from the, as I read this, this is from the High Water. This is setback.
Correct.
High Water. So it would be seventy-five feet back, right, is what I see for a minimum, including all your fill extensions and all, every clearing and all.
Correct.
Okay. So I think, yeah, that's what your,
Yeah, said it was.
It's not from property, like, I want to.
And who's to system itself be greater than seventy-five feet? Right now, it's going to stand out, taking slow, so your system may be at eighty-five, because you're taking that short space around the little man.
A couple of things I'm listening, one is we shouldn't use the holding tanks, could create under pressure or priority. Okay, and number two. You, I mean, it's what I think about that. All right, the seventy-five foot, so now it exists, seventy-five feet, and then one hundred and fifty, I won't buy it. It's the sound I'm saying here, I was reading again, it looks like you're sort of stopping over it, it's stoning board.
Stoning Board is responsible for setbacks of structures, and a holding tank would qualify as a setback. As a structure.
The, there has never been allowed for a new structure to have open tankings shot. That's already, I think that's already off the books, if we're on a new residential structure. I think they're clear about that.
Okay.
So you're saying that there's never been, can you say that one more time?
It's only just now, if you have a new residential start in the zone, that it could put a sit the block itself as we set the size that we're able to have a septic system, not a water.
Our setup.
So you don't like it there?
No problem. Thank you.
They have to adjust it.
I do not believe that the way the zoning rule reads now, that if you have a new construction of a house in the shoreline zone, you cannot, you're not allowed now to have a holding tank. So it's just stating what is kind of already known, right, for new.
Yeah.
You have to have a septic.
Pre-existing is,
A whole different story.
Correct.
Because you can't, well, I'll be quiet.
I don't think it's a question. I just moved it.
Yeah.
Didn't change it. I believe all that language.
Ed just made the point. Ed worked very hard with Don, moving, a lot of this stuff has been moved, it's not new for the ordinance.
Yes. As I see it, you took all the mining stuff out of here, because that's got its own order.
Correct.
So look, they can, they changed this stuff up.
A lot of stuff moved out, you're right, to other ordinances, and we moved it around, organized it.
The one thing I have to comment about that as far as moving things for the campgrounds portion. You moved it from Section fourteen, under thirteen, so it moved it from the development and shore areas up under specific activities. So then, instead of shore areas, it changed the, the overall campsite dis, size to five thousand square, uh, square feet. Yep. A, a minimum of five thousand square feet, where the state licensure, for shoreline, it's five thousand. For inland or a different area, it's one thousand. So now it's putting that constraint on campgrounds. I didn't know if that was something that we've looked at or discussed. Just by moving it from Section fourteen to thirteen.
That may be an oversight. Let me just double check here.
On page thirty-nine, it shows development in shoreline areas, or shore areas. Number fourteen. And number thirteen is just specified activities.
We, the vision for campgrounds, so when we move the shoreline stuff.
So we got to fix that. So we'll make a note of that and fix that.
Okay.
Thank you. I have another one. If you're ready. Okay, the, the last one here, six C, excuse me.
Anthony, or VB?
Andy?
Can you yield to Jamie, please?
Oh, I could yield to Jamie, sure.
Rick, thanks, thanks for working on all this. Quick question on that table, on that page nineteen. And I noticed that the minimum lot size increased, doesn't matter whether sewer or not. And is that pre, that's going to be for anything new? So it doesn't, it's not going to affect anything that may be previous?
If, if I could, I'm, I'm going to answer that question. I have a couple of, So Planning Board had a public hearing. They noted that they had omitted that column.
Yep.
But it was supposed to be added back in.
Okay.
So that stands as it originally was. That will not,
Okay, good. I noticed it was redlined and everything looked like it was struck out, so I just, was just kind of getting clarification, but that's going to stand back in there. So if you have sewer, so the slot sizes stays the same. Thank you.
Do you mind if I make a couple other notes?
Please, go ahead. Please.
So just to note, the formatting, once all of this is accepted, the actual, the text, the references to the different numbers and the formatting will have to be updated. So what's now C may be D, but that will come after you all adopt it, before it becomes final, but they won't change the actual language itself in terms of the intent and application. I want to note that the definitions are not changed. They weren't posted with the rest of the ordinance because they have not changed, so they are still part of the ordinance. You just don't have, you know, a copy of them, and there was no changes to post, so I just want to know, they are the same. Uh, it was suggested by the Planning Board after we had posted to public hearing that we add a reference which does not change the actual ordinance, but in the table, on Table Three, regarding height, there was suggested that we cross-reference the non-conforming, and we just get that. We cross-reference the non-conforming section of the ordinance because the height for structures in the shoreline zone, if you're expanding a non-conforming structure, it's graduated depending on how close to the resource you are. So the height could be fifteen feet, it could be twenty, twenty-five. Generally, the maximum height is thirty-five outside of the setback. But if it's non-conforming, there's specific differences within that section of the ordinance. So it applies regardless, but the suggestion was to cross-reference it here, so someone doesn't look at it and say, oh, I have thirty-five feet to fight with, when in fact, they may not. So just as a point of clarification, we just mentioned that, that that table was not supposed to be admitted. It was mentioned earlier that, of the zone, and the, the language was changed to shoreline areas versus zone, because we have an actual shoreline zone, we have resource protection, we have shoreline, public water. So just to differentiate, all of those are in the shoreline area, but we actually have a shoreline zone within that. So that was just to pull those apart and hopefully make that more clear. And then the last one, you were talking about page twenty-one. Back to that. We're going to look into that. So I believe that's per Chapter One Thousand. So we, you know, like Rick said, we'll follow up on that, but I believe that is what Chapter One Thousand says. I don't think the board was looking to be more restrictive, so we'll look that up.
Head right.
All right.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Article seven, uh, this, required to give a prior planning board application traditionally, the whole story. That's been applicant's choice under the environment enforcement officer, and I really don't see any reason to change it. Fact is to require under Chapter One.
Under Chapter One Thousand, pardon me, I had a little bitter bonk I just, and I keep moving the mic so I don't cough into it. Under Chapter One Thousand, there's now de novo hearings to the zoning board, so you could find yourself going to the zoning board for setback requirement, going to the planning board, and then coming back to the zoning board for a de novo hearing. So I, I would suggest to leave that to the conversation between codes and the applicant. I really would. We'll take that input.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So the code enforcement officer actually participated in this language. And towns do do it differently. They have the option, but it should be clear which way it goes to the public, to someone who's using the ordinance. And the reason why it was promoted this way is because, to me, zoning is a threshold issue. Do you have the legal right to apply for a, a permit for this property? Does it meet zoning? Now, it, in this instance, it wouldn't, so it wouldn't go to the planning board. It would have to go to the zoning board to get a variance to therefore meet the zoning, and then the board could look at it from there. That's, that was how that came about.
Okay, then the other thing, well, I got the floor somehow, is, uh, these decreasing the minimum lot size in cluster developments to eight thousand square feet. I don't approve of cluster developments. I know we now have them. Uh, and I am certainly not going to approve of decreasing the minimum lot size. In my experience in another life, in another state, I found that preserved open spaces, barriers, cluster developments, as soon as population increases and people need a place to build a house, they go south, okay? The rules change and you build houses on the open space. So I, I won't agree to go on less than eight thousand square feet. I can show you places in New Jersey where fifty-foot screens that were forced on a developer now have fifty by a hundred and fifty lots with two thousand square foot outs on them. So I, I won't approve of this.
I'll let Roy talk, and then I believe our code enforcement officers online would like to say something. Go ahead.
One question I had, timber harvest, it shows repealed in here. What is?
The timber harvest, page thirty-nine, shows it as repealed. Can you explain what the antenna that is?
Starts to feel where?
Page thirty-nine.
Or here. Is that correct? Try here.
Yes.
Can I answer that?
That was existing.
Yes.
That was, that's not changed.
That was it. We didn't change that. So we should fix that, is what you're saying.
Well, I'm just wondering what it's, where to go, I mean, what is, what is the repealed? I'm assuming that there's no regulation on it? Is that what, is that what? By repeal?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
So under, under Chapter One Thousand, when we changed over, we went and allowed the main forest service to be responsible for all timber harvests in the state, uh, town of Winthrop. So that's why that's repealed. So I don't do any permitting, and I don't do anything with timber harvests. It's all done through the main forest service.
That's, that's kind of a good thing.
Thank you, Mark. Did you have something else?
Oh, Jim's got a good point. Should we just state that in here? You know, something to, to that effect? In the,
Make a reference to the main state forestry?
So if someone's looking for the process that was there previously, and they see it, they now know they have to go through the main forests or,
You're saying a reference?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be honest, most timber harvests are done by licensed foresters, and they know the rules and regulations. Typically, a homeowner doesn't do a timber harvest, per se, and there's rules and regulations that determine whether it's a timber harvest or just a select cut, so. You could put something in there, you could just say that timber harvests are, you know, regulated by the main forest service. But most of them that are done are done, like I said, by a licensed arborist or, or a forester, so.
It would just give somebody some direction on where to go.
Correct. You could do that. I mean, it's not, that's not an issue, just the main forest service said if we were going to switch over to them being responsible for all timber harvests, they would not allow us to issue permits or be a part of that process. So that's why we repealed that if, if it's just showing up now. And I, I was listening, trying to listen earlier, but it's really hard when people are not using their microphone, so I can't. It was something to do with the septic systems and the setbacks and, and there was a lot, holding tanks, I will tell you, holding tanks are not allowed as a first-time use. Holding tanks need a minimum of state plumbing inspector and myself to approve. They don't often get approved as far as a holding tank in the shoreline zone. So I don't know if that's, that was a point of interest. Like I said, it was hard to understand some of it without microphone use, so.
Thank you, Mark. That's a good reminder for all the counselors to speak into the mic.
Yes.
All right. Anyone from the audience have any questions?
That's, um, hi, pet lab. Um, so Table First, what is, what is Chapter One Thousand? You guys are throwing it around and never heard of it.
I can explain it. It'll be a lot easier. Chapter One Thousand is the governing ordinance from the state Main Department of Environmental Protection. It's the shoreline zoning ordinance that they use. The state then tells the towns that they can, they, we cannot be less restrictive than that, we can be more restrictive, but that is, that is the governing ordinance that our shoreline zoning is governed.
I guess I didn't know what it was called.
Yep, it's called Chapter One Thousand. It's, uh, it's a little bit of a lengthy, you know, process, but in the shoreline zone, we pretty much merit, word for word in our ordinance, to make it less confusing for any applicants, so.
Okay, so on Table Three, uh, when we did the comprehensive plan, we talked about increasing growth areas, being the village zone and general residential zone. You mentioned that we were, because of LD two thousand three, to whatever the number is, that we're trying to decrease square footage. I don't see that any lot sizes have been decreased to allow for more square footage, just a point. But we did talk about that. Um, but we did talk about that in the comprehensive plan and did the setbacks. So that allows a little more building, but it doesn't change. Any minimum lot size and we had been very pretty specific about that. So that's just a point. Um. Then. On page thirty-two, I think there's a typographical error. It says minimum lot size shall be ten thousand square feet. Ten thousand is crossed out and is two thousand, but you didn't write in the words two thousand. Just. That's just a minimal thing. And then page thirty-five. Uh, oh, this is about the campsites. This is. Um, on J one, are we talking about lots that cannot be built on? So they are considered a campsite lot? Is that what that means? Page thirty-five, J one.
It's numbers.
Oh, sorry.
Are you talking about roads and driveways?
On on a vacant lot, one campsite per existing on the effective date. Thirty thousand square feet.
That's on the individual private campsites, J.
So I don't know if that mean that's a private campsite. So I assume that's a lot that's non-buildable. So we're allowing a tent.
The language there doesn't exactly explain a whole lot.
Okay, not just me. Okay.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I'm clear on the question. So page thirty-five, individual private campsites, number one, references thirty thousand square feet. And so the question was if it's a not if it's a non-buildable lot.
Right. I mean, are we talking a non-buildable lot? So you're allowing a tent there?
I I think that's case by case. It may or may not be non.
Don, can I just comment on the language though? It says on a vacant lot, one campsite per lot existing. On the effective date of the ordinance that to me speaks.
Oh, it's duplicative.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just one campsite.
That's me. There's that up. I don't.
So an existing vacant lot, one campsite. Okay.
And maybe this is my not understanding. So what are we doing about septic on a campsite lot? Are we've is that addressed somewhere?
It is not. We've lost our code enforcement officer. Um, I know that if if there's um an RV. Then it is a question of whether or not they're hooking into a sewer or septic. There are state laws around privies as well. Um. If Mark comes back, he could address that more specifically, but my understanding is that you can pull a permit for. Now they don't call it an outhouse, right? Because there and maybe I don't know if you know about this. Um, there's there's more science back, you know, back to it and you have to meet those standards, but you.
Number seven has a recreational vehicle tent or shelter. Yeah, seven does too. So.
Okay.
The question is about the sewer, but if you go into page thirty-six, that same subsection of uh number six. It it looks like you guys got it covered. I think it's talking about it. So I think it's it's been identified.
And have we talked about the difference between a privy uh composting toilet? It does that all like?
It looks like it's talking about all that, just plans for for sewage disposal.
Okay.
And you refer back to this.
To all of it.
The state definition.
Yeah, the state definition. So Mark would look at that and determine if it met minimum standards and that's that the state level. That's not something you adopt. We've adopted locally.
Okay. And then J, number two, um, on a lot that contains a principal structure use or principal use or structure, the lot shall be a minimum dimensional requirements. Blah, 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 thirty thousand square feet. But if you look on the graph on table three, um, it's not thirty thousand square feet. So it seems like that's. Um, doesn't jive with the table three and maybe I didn't read it right. I'm not done. Oh, crap. I have all these yellow. Um.
You're saying the numbers are different?
Well, if you're.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it myself. It looked like one saying thirty, one saying forty.
Right.
Yeah, so the numbers are just.
They're just they don't match up. So I think that should at least be looked at and.
Yeah.
Maybe it's maybe it's explanatory somehow, but it's not clear to me.
Yeah, and I don't know if they're just talking about a a campsite. So maybe they're reducing it for the campsite to be only thirty thousand square feet versus forty, which is actually a structure.
Right. And so is campsite defined somewhere? Just so it should be.
No, I but do they define it though in that in that number one? And that and that and J, number one, did they define that as a?
Definition section.
Yeah.
You don't.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Oh.
This one. Kind of help along.
Essential services will be defined.
I mean, I can go. Okay.
Go ahead.
I have two things. One is on page sixty. Um, it says it's eliminated the code enforcement officer. And says a town official shall notify the applicant, the owners of all abutting property. Um, that leaves. A myriad of officials that could have or should have done that. That also traditionally been the responsibility of the code enforcement officer. Code enforcement officer now, it's my understanding, has the ability to use the town's executive assistant. To write those letters and create those forms, but it's still his responsibility to make sure all the others are notified and sign the forms. And I don't see why we need to change that. If the idea was to make it easier for the code enforcement officer, we've uh already done that. Okay, now one person has to be responsible. Right. And secondly, if we start to define campsite. Uh, on a certain sized piece of property, we have to define campsite. I don't have the full ordinance in front of me, but I don't recall that campsite is uh defined in the definitions of the ordinance. If if people pull up their boat on their twenty-five thousand square foot lot. And light a fire and melt some marshmallows and the neighbors don't like it, are they camping? We we have to answer those questions.
I believe it is defined. I'm gonna step away for just a moment.
Is it?
So I believe it is defined and I.
Okay.
Have that in.
Good. Yeah, neither do I. So we'll we'll find out.
Yeah.
I just want to say, and I tried to state before, I know this is a lot of work and I really appreciate the planning board going through this step by step and really making the updates because. I I look at it and it is an exorbitant amount of work. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this and and Dawn helping out and and Mark and so forth. So um. I I appreciate the work that you guys have put into this.
Thank you.
Remendable job. Hundred and twenty-page document. Lot of time.
And I I think we all feel that way. I I know that there are things we don't agree with, but that doesn't mean that we don't appreciate your hard work and your effort.
Just wanted to speak quickly to Andy's comment. So. Conditional use permits go to the planning board. The table of uses defines two different levels of permitting permitting. Administrative is the code enforcement officer and then a conditional use permit is the planning board. So Mark used to staff the planning board, but now the planner does. So. The reason why code enforcement officer was struck from that is because he actually isn't involved in that process anymore. And uh they and they tossed this around quite a bit and they decided on town official as opposed to saying planner or executive assistant. Um, they left. They wanted to put town official, leave it at that, but obviously that is up to the council.
Sorry, Don, I don't agree.
Pat, did you have any other comments?
On under the table three again, village zone, there's a red um minimum lot size without sewer at thirty-five hundred square feet. Uh, yeah, thirty-five hundred square feet. What was crossed out? It doesn't show what was crossed out.
This is showing a crossout.
You have a cross out?
Yeah, the village zone.
What was?
With with sewers, thirty-five hundred. It's the same same number.
So. But it's showing red, so I assume that means it's a change. No?
Well, I think they just went to a minimum lot size period.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying the red.
I think it was just moved over to the.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
It appears that there was nothing in the right-hand column.
Probably not.
And it looks like there was just moved over so that everything's in the same column.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
I guess I would like to reiterate that I would like to see minimum lot size reduced in the general residential zone. Because that's where the comprehensive plan was.
I think it's fair to look at.
Said in the residential zone or village. Village and.
And there's general residence.
Um, Don, while we're on that topic, can you address how the um. AVUs or the accessory dwelling units go into that? Minimum lot size for already established, I guess, would be for.
So the the requirements of the state and the town did adopt in accordance with that is that accessory dwelling units do not fall under density calculations. So it does not affect it. However, I will say that the setback changes could impact the ability of people to build. A accessory dwelling units, garages, you know, a garage with an ADU above it. So that you may see more ADUs as a result of that.
We have anything else? Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. Um.
Thank you.
Coming in, Rich and Ed.
Don to uh.
Yes.
Don's an excellent resource for us. I mean, we've got a lot more done in a short period of time over the last several months. So really appreciate that resource. Thank you.
Appreciate it from the planning board coming in. All right, so I'll go ahead and close the uh public hearing at six forty-one. Move on to item one seventy-one. Before we do that, I'm just gonna go real quick uh down the notes that I had that we had discussed as far as uh section fourteen moved to section thirteen and reduce the campground lot sizes. Article four twelve uh E nine A from the performance standards with someone needing to be certified by the DEP. Uh, just relooking that per chapter one thousand, uh, including a reference for timber harvesting to the main department of forestry. Uh, section J, individual private campsite, number uh three uh numbers don't match table three. Uh, and having a campsite definition will verify that and a minimum lot size in general residential. Then, okay, all right. So item one seventy-one, consideration of the zoning ordinance amendments as recommended by the planning board.
And moved. And we can make that a motion as.
Want a table?
Yeah.
To make a motion uh to table the zoning ordinance amendment as recommended by the planning board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table item one seventy-one. All in favor? All in favor? Six and zero. Thank you. Item one seventy-two, discussion and consideration of updates to the LED lighting proposal. Uh, so with that, we by request of the council, uh, we asked to have our town manager go back out with our lighting vendor. And relook some of the buildings that we had, um, municipal buildings included in the quote. That we had received and what they found was that we have currently uh some buildings uh with uh lights running all day. Thank you very much. To include an internal storage space in the Annabaskuk building um. With six fig uh fixtures with smart controls which could be removed, uh, reduces the cost from five by five hundred twenty-eight dollars. Uh, otherwise, so the you guys probably read through all this. Okay. All right. So is there any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Uh, all of these of the proposed lights that he's using right now, uh, even. Do they all have motion sensors? Are they all on motion sensors? So if nobody's in the building, they're gonna shut off?
So our vendor, uh, Steve Lieber is on the line, but I believe that's correct. Steve, can you please weigh in?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, thanks for having me. Um, all of the lights that are listed as smart fixtures will. Uh, every single one of them have luminaire level lighting controls which include motion sensors. Yes.
So Steve, just to clarify, so we did remove those. Smart controls which include the motion sensors from six of the fixtures in the Annabaskuk building. But the other lighting fixtures in the Annabaskuk building, the transfer station in the public works garage do remain, correct?
Uh, correct. And as a matter of fact, um, uh, what will change here and is actually not reflected was my note uh. Uh, to all to you, Anthony, which is that all the high bays that are going in at the DPW. Um, Annabaskuk, those any high bays will now have smart controls on them at no additional cost. That's just a new product update that we've brought in. Um, which is definitely, you know, certainly efficiency beneficial to the town at absolutely no additional cost.
Yeah. And and so Roy, one of the benefits of that is, as you can imagine, a lot of those spaces, the bay doors are open. There's daylight streaming in, and so those sensors will reduce the amount of. Light coming from the fixture during those uh during those times.
So uh, as as I read this, I what I see is it's it's a reduction of five hundred and twenty-eight dollars total.
Correct.
Everything.
Correct. And and it's almost a wash when you consider that.
I would think it would be if you shut the lights off when people leave the building. You're gonna save five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Well.
Twenty years.
No, what I'm talking about is if you if you do remove those fixtures, you're also reducing some of the incentives that efficiency main uh would be giving. But the amount of energy and cost savings that you're gonna see over the twenty-year lifespan of the project is gonna be. Is gonna dwarf the five hundred dollars that you're gonna spend. Uh, or the or, excuse me, the additional amount that you're gonna spend for the smart controls. And all of the other fixtures with the exception of those six.
So these smart controls, they are controls that uh, once we get them set to where we want them. Then we can put the controller away and just they'll they'll respond how we. You know, over the next twenty years, essentially, they'll they'll work the way that we set them.
And and that's correct with one exception. So there will be dimming switches uh in the building. So if 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 the the natural controls are too bright, not bright enough, someone can can uh move the dimming switch just to. Uh, adjust the uh the lighting to whatever their specification is at that moment, depending upon what they're doing within that space.
That was also noted in here that there were uh network nodes in the decorative downtown streetlights that um. For a total cost of two thousand nine hundred and seven or a hundred and fifty-three dollars per node. Uh, so it was saying that it would give us an additional savings of about five hundred to six hundred dollars per year. Uh, so that's something that we could benefit from if we added those nodes as well, but remove those smart lighting. Mark. That we just talked about at the Annabaskuk building.
Yeah. And so the benefit of that is you can more um accurately control the lighting coming from either the system or any individual light. And I think one of the big, big benefits of that is that it sends an alert. To us whenever there's a light that's out. So we know straight away that we've got an issue. We contact Affinity and they send their vendor over to repair the light.
And uh, explain to us one more time about the warranty on these products. I know it's. There there's a lot of technology in.
Steve?
I would like to know. Uh, how long is the warranty on this before we have to start paying for failures?
And what is the anticipated shelf life as well? The service life of these LED lights?
So the the shelf life on the lights, um, according to the calculations that we have to turn in to get these certified through Design Lights Consortium, which is. Really, in 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 essence, the energy star of LED fixtures. Uh, the official reported in our third-party certified lab reports. Um, would depending on the 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 building is anywhere from twenty-seven to thirty-five years. Is the official, you know, the algorithms that are run through these, what's called TM twenty-one reports that Department of Energy has a spill out. Um, you know, we're telling you that, look, these these fixtures are gonna be up for the next twenty years. Uh, could they last twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years? Absolutely. But you're certainly making a decision about fixtures that are going up for the next twenty years. The warranty um to answer that first question is seven years. The standard warranty in the industry is five years. That's what Design Lights Consortium requires. And the utilities require for any qualified product up on the DLC qualified products list. But we built it. We know it's better and we provide a seven-year warranty on those.
Yes. Uh, does this also include upgraded lighting at the intersection of Route two O two and Island Park Road as promised? You were going to install an additional light there for better visuals in the turning lane when you make a left-hand turn off the westbound two O two or a right-hand turn off the eastbound two O two?
Steve, I can't recall. Did I speak with you and or Johnny or did I talk with the DOT about that? Um, I I'm. I'm not quite sure. I mean, you've got some DOT lights in town that are operating, which are, you know, not lights that we converted because they're not on your ledger from Central Main Power. You're not paying for those. They're not, they're not tariffed. Yeah. So in terms of answering your question, sir, this proposal does not include any new street light, streetlights. It only includes the, the buildings that were discussed and the decorative lighting downtown being upgraded.
Well, it was promised to constituents in that area voicing concerns about accessibility and safety that a lighting pole would be either upgraded to a brighter LED by our town manager or replaced and a new one put in its place. They're doing work over there now. It's an opportune time to do that.
So I think we'd have to probably take that offline and determine are those lights DOT lights or town lights? And if they're town lights, certainly we can do that on our own, you know, with, with town manager.
Mr. Wilson informed us on the council that they were owned by the town of Winthrop and that we controlled them. So it would be no problem to integrate new lighting systems into that area and the additional light application at that intersection or just inside that intersection.
So without having the GIS map of our lighting conversion up in front of me, I think we, we would have to get back to you on that specific, you know, that, that's going to be something that I'm, we're going to have our operations manager do. Because we're going to bring our installer back in to add or upgrade lights, depending on what is necessary for that intersection. But everything is do, it's all doable, certainly.
I'd like to have Anthony give us a report on his progress to make that after we promised those constituents on Island Park Road that we would address that issue. Thank you.
Steve, thanks for getting on. Just hate to keep beating a dead horse, but I don't have my paperwork here in front of me tonight. And I just want to make sure it's clear in my head from your proposal about the warranty. Seven years. Is that full warranty? Are we just talking parts? Are we talking labor? Are we talking the whole shebang for seven years?
Labor is, is, is the standard industry. One year on labor, materials, parts, equipment is seven years.
Okay. So if you, so we got a device that fails and it's going to come out, it's going to, going to cost us your time, but materials is going to be under warranty.
Correct. That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
How did you understand it?
Cover.
Labor and parts.
Okay. But to bring it back, we're looking at the updates to the LED proposal that we've already approved. And so I think that that is including the smart controls and removing those from the Annabasket building and potentially adding network nodes to the downtown streetlights if we want to.
I'd like to make a motion.
I, I think that we need to look back. I think that I'm almost positive that question had come up regarding the warranty and the answer when we were discussing against the other company was that it would be at no cost to us under the warranty. And I believe it was just stated exactly like that if I, as I remember it. So I would like to look back at the other meeting.
Okay.
I moved to table this. Approval of the LED lighting proposal as presented until the next meeting to answer Roy's question with regards to warranty issues.
Discussion? Is this, do we know any effects on the CRP? Can reaction grant?
So the, so the grant application deadline is December 17th. So we, so we will meet again on December the 2nd. But, but we, you know, we got, we got to get, we got to provide all the information to the CRP if we're going to qualify for that $75,000.
That's the only question that I have.
Yeah. So, so Steve, let, let me ask you, let me ask you a question. We have at times called affinity and said, hey, we have a street light out at such and such address. And here's the pole number. And, and someone's come out and they've fixed or replaced the light. We have never received any sort of an invoice for the labor for those lights, which are still under warranty. So what is the difference between that and, and what you're, what you're talking about with these, with these lights that are under consideration right now?
If, if there is, I, I can tell you there's not with, without a single exception that there is only a one year warranty. Excuse me, with a single exception. There was one municipality that had put into, it was the capital Augusta that had put into, required in their contract for two years of labor along with the, with the warranty on the street lighting. That is the one exception that has been made to my knowledge since I started this company in 2012 on warranties. So if there's a misunderstanding, certainly I apologize, but I, I would certainly never represent that there is a labor warranty because our, our warranty statement is very clear on that. That it's seven years on equipment and one year on labor.
So there was a motion to table. Is there a second? Okay. Table. All in favor to table item 172? All opposed? So four and two. What are you voting?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm in favor of table.
Okay. Four and two. Thank you. So we will table this. Item 173, discussion of possible no engine brakes zone along US Route 202. So we do have, I believe it is Andy Blanchard who had presented this to us and we had discussed it at our last meeting and the council had requested to have some more discussion on it. And so I believe we do have a copy of the maps. So we have a visual. I do believe we have Mr. Blanchard in the audience. Thank you for coming tonight. And so I will turn it over to the council. If we have any questions, we have Mr. Blanchard here. If you can come to the podium. And then also we do have a couple of other locations currently with the unnecessary noise ordinance in place along Route 202.
We have the verbiage for those signs.
From the ordinance?
Yeah, the ones that are already posted.
Oh, the, the signs that are already up.
What the signs say, I don't, I did not include that in the memo.
So again, I'll just reiterate what my concern was is that the, I certainly don't see as much of an issue posting the signs with consideration, but I don't want to put an enforceable prohibit sign, at least on the westbound 202 from Caprara on the top of the hill west as, because I, I don't think that, I think that adds liability to the town if there were to be an accident. I want trucks to be able to blow down that hill versus just posting down the hill. From the Peck Farm Road going east is a much gentler grade. So I don't have a problem with sign postage there. But again, I would prefer the sign to not be a complete prohibition, but rather be, you know, just a visual reminder that there are residents that would appreciate the limited use of any engine braking.
Well, I've got a little bit of a concern with this being that, you know, we're talking about a major artery, you know, traveling artery. We have Hanaford trucks. Many, many of them throughout the, the day and night going down through there and you know, it's not in a, a village zone. It's not, you know, I just, it's, it's a concern of mine that much like Aaron's that we, you know, there's a reason for those brakes on those trucks. And, you know, you've, you're talking downhill both ways into that area. And it's a little concerning that they're, we're, you know, trying to limit them from using the brakes. Yep. Well, Main Street to Royal Street is right near the village. Yeah. Yeah. Well, one, one big difference is you're talking a big, much exactly, exactly what Aaron's saying. It's much more condensed when it's residential. If, if I was to vote on that intersection, I would say that
No brake?
Yeah, I would, I would not want a restriction through there either, or even you know, the, the other one, there's, there's much less truck traffic coming down from Squire Court down through Summer Street. There's not a lot of, you're talking, you know, from Augusta down to Hanaford. There is a huge amount of truck traffic through there. It, it is a main artery. It has been a main artery for many, many years. And, you know, I just, it's tough. In my opinion, it's tough to limit the use of a brake on a big rig through that area.
May I say something?
Yes, please.
Is it, is your concern because it's a steep, it's a steep hills going into the area? Is that more than anything?
Yeah. I mean, it's downhill both.
So the, the one, the, the signs that are already posted in East Winthrop don't concern you because they're not as steep? Is that why?
But in East Winthrop?
Yeah, the ones that are posted there.
They're for one, they're already posted. It's not something that we're voting on now.
I agree. I'm just saying those.
That's what I'm saying, you know? That, that is also a village area. More of a highly condensed village areas in this stretch. I mean, look, if you look at the house, the density of the houses between, we're talking Caprara to Peck Farm Road, right?
Right. Don't work the brake or you want to be able to brake where it's less condensed?
You also, you also have to take in consideration that the speed limits from here to here are 55 miles per hour. And you don't keep correct. So where these other breakings are 45 miles per hour and are going slower to begin with, but this is a federal highway. And it's actually, we're really not supposed to be regulating anything on the federal highway to disrupt commerce. And so I think adding a sign from, on the 55 mile per hour is, is again, I think it's more a liability to the town than anything that would help. And I don't know, again, I, I'm, I'm fine posting a sign that says be considerate. We have residents here. Don't, you know, limit use of engine braking. But a prohibition, I don't think, A, we have the authority to be honest with you and B. What?
DOT blocks.
Yeah, yeah. But you're not going to get, yeah, but you're not going to get any enforcement on that. So I, I, again, I think it's more of a courtesy. But I do think we do have to think of the safety that it is, that's the only area that I can think of that is 55 miles per hour. Is that correct? Okay. So I don't think, you know, when you have a load and you're asking them just to use the brake coming down from that hill, they may have no choice but to engine brake. And to use that to slow down.
But the hours you hear them mostly.
We hear them in the morning and everyone I know that lives on Upper Narrows complains about it. I could imagine Andy West could comment on it as well. It's much more than just who's on 202. It's all across the lake. You see that everyone can hear it, even if you're really far down in Upper Narrows, you hear it. I, I wish we could change the speed limit to 45. There was a major accident there just last week, right at the top of Asher Luna Drive. Still all kinds of engine automobile parts on the road that I have to go pick up tomorrow. But anyways, I thought in lieu of trying to lobby for lower speed limit, I saw this already signs that people are limiting engine brakes. So I thought, could we post one? Or could we post one on, maybe not on the steeper part, but on the other it kind, the one going from the top, from Peck Farm Road goes, that's a major hill. And then it goes kind of flat, the veterinary hospital. And then there's a little one, maybe right there. So that's, that's exactly where you hear this really loud, annoying ones in the morning. And, and, and at night, but morning's really bad because if you're sleeping at 5:00 AM, you definitely hear them at 5:00 PM. You're not sleeping so much. So it's different. If you're canoeing on the lake, not that anyone cares about recreational activities on a, on a lake, but you definitely hear it. Just echoes across the lake and it's very annoying. I wish it wasn't the case. And we've, we've thought this for decades. I'm finally here just trying to see if we can do something.
Okay. So when I was at the hotel when Joe put the young put that sign in, I don't know whether he physically put it in or he got permission from the state. Don't have those details. But he put it in that was good enough for me. Okay. And one of the issues there wasn't just the noise. It said, coming from the west. You know, you come over that hill after the golf course and the sightline between the Island Park Road intersection and the top of that hill is fairly limited for a 75,000 pound truck to get on the brakes when they're going 50 miles an hour. Okay. So it was more than just the noise. Okay. And the hill, it was also had to do with the sightline. Okay. And how much time did you have with the 75,000 pound truck going 50 miles an hour to use an average speed? To hit the brakes and come to a complete stop. Someone hit the brakes in front of you with the new intersection. Now you have a little more time, but not much. So we need to consider sightlines as well, I would think. I'm willing to live with hearing Jake breaks every now and then in, for the sake of safety.
Yeah. I mean, obviously I'm not trying to advocate against safety. I was just wondering if there was some sort of something we could do. If the answer is no, I accept that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item 174, discussion of the diesel fuel prices. At our last meeting, Councilor Burns had requested on some discussion regarding Winthrop Fuels pricing over the Department of Transportation's pricing on diesel fuel. There was some ranging prices since between August and now. And so he just wanted to relook at that. And we did receive a copy of all of the different invoices. And I believe what we had been finding from some of the employees was that they were just going to DOT, but they were directed that whatever is most economical to go to that one. That fuel location, unless it's in the extreme weather conditions to go to the safest, one closest or closest direction. Do you have any questions or?
Well, I'd just like to note that the excise tax is rebated back to the town at the end of the year by state law. So even though it's charged initially, it's refunded back. You can check with Nick to verify that, but I think my information is correct. And I don't see any reason why we're not using Winthrop Fuel a bit more than buying it through the state who is not charging us excise tax, if I'm not mistaken.
And we also do have our director of public works is in attendance. And I do see Mr. Garrett from Winthrop Fuel Company is also in attendance. So thank you. If you have any comments or you'd like to come up to the podium.
I have a question that might help.
Of Councilor White.
Yeah. Can the public director come up and describe the process for fuel selection and what he's observed?
When I got here, I was informed that we are fueling at the DOT site. And that was at present day. And one of the things that I had heard was that they was at times fueled with Mr. Garrett at, at Winthrop Fuel. So I asked the town manager about that and we looked into it. And we did find that over the course of time, it is less expensive to go with Winthrop Fuel. So that was the direction that I gave the people that work with me. Go to Winthrop Fuel unless you're it. I mean, if we have a truck in that area up by DOT and it's snowing and you need flu, stop there. Right. I'll pay the Right, I'll pay the few extra cents because I'm not having you run all the way downtown again, but.
And then just for, uh, our information and the public's information, can we, uh, DOT being the DOT garage off of?
Metcalf, thank you.
Yep.
Yep. So we can fuel at both locations, but the direction is to use Winthrop Fuel because of cost savings. That it?
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett.
Name is Dick Garrett, taxpayer, no Winthrop Fuel. This was all done to save money for the taxpayers. Well, I'm a pretty big taxpayer. Check the blogs. And I find out Town Winthrop's paying between 50 to 70 cents a gallon more for their fuel by going on top of the hill. You're putting your ambulances, you're putting your fire trucks, you're putting your highway trucks, but very dangerous road. I lived up on Metcalf Hill for 30 years and I've seen a lot of trucks off the road. Why, if you want to save money, why are we going up there? I'd like to know why we're going up there. I'd like to hear from the town manager why we're going up there and spending 50 to 70 cents more a gallon. My facility and has the council has seen the contract the town manager signed? Have you reviewed it? With the state, state of Maine? Have you seen it? Has any of you seen the contract that he signed with the state of Maine? DOT by diesel fuel up there? Haven't seen it. None of you have seen it? Would you like to see it?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. And you think the dump truck driver or the, the firemen are going to know what the price of fuel is in the middle of the night? We're going to call Anthony and say, hey, Anthony, who's cheaper, Dick or the main DOT? These guys don't have time for that stuff. I've lived in this town my whole life, 68 years. And I've always done the town. I've always taken great pride in it, okay? And I've always had a facility that was plowed, standard, lit and generated. When we had the ice storm, I was the only show in town that had gasoline and a generator to run it. None of you guys know it because you didn't work for the town back then, but we kept them going and we continue to keep them going. And I just don't, I'm all for saving. I have no problem with saving money, folks. But what I do have is going to an alternative source, not coming to me and ask me, what's your price going to be? What can we do? Just taking it upon yourself and going up to the highway department and asking the highway department, the DOT for a contract. Never asked, no one came to me and asked me about diesel fuel.
It's meant to be a discuss.
I haven't.
Well, I meant like that.
I'd just like to speak to the, the, the whole intent, as I understood it, of signing up with the DOT at all. Was the fact that we, we had a contract price on gasoline and you pulled the contract on gasoline.
That's, who told you that, Roy? Who told you I pulled the contract? Who told you? You said, we pulled the con, who told you I pulled the contract?
I'm looking at the emails here. There wasn't a second, you didn't.
Who told you? Who told you I pulled the contract, Roy?
Didn't you refer, tell us that you pulled the contract?
Okay.
Did you, did you pull the contract?
Well, we did. We wrote a contract. We presented the town a contract. He didn't like the contract. He didn't like the wording. He wanted 14 days on his, on his terms. We have to pay for our product in 10 days, as standard in the industry. He didn't like it. We never, we, what we said is we're not changing the contract. That's what we said.
Didn't we, didn't we sign a contract or, or, or accept a contract with gasoline this year?
Can you keep, isn't that? Yeah, let, let, let me say this, Roy. I don't know if you guys know how much gasoline, you use two loads of gasoline, about 16,000 gallons a year, two transport loads, not a big deal, you know? But he wanted to change words. He wanted to change contract. Our contract wasn't good enough. He wanted to come up with a contract of his own. Ask him where that contract is he wanted to come up with. Let's take a look at it.
We also updated.
Go on my contract and let's see what his contract says.
Did update the contract here as well?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from the town manager. I'd like to hear some words from him.
For the diesel, Dick.
Speaking of diesel fuel prices.
Yeah. Absolutely. Read that contract. Anybody understand what that contract says? You see the clause in there that says if the state comes under scrutiny and they can't get diesel fuel, they have the right to shut the Town Winthrop off? Is that what you want for your taxpayers? And you can't get around icy roads and ice storm? I lived through the ice storm. Trust me, we all did. It was horrible. It was awful. Everybody worked their tails off 24 hours a day, getting product in and keeping product in, keeping everybody going, generators and diesel fuel and gasoline and everything. It's not about the money. I don't care about the money. It's not that big of a deal to me, but it's pride more than anything. And I want to set record straight and that's why I'm here. It's like Abraham Lincoln said, if you don't lie to anybody, you never have to worry about what you say to anybody.
I was going to say, I was confused during the heating fuel RFP.
Yep, bid.
Yep, RFP process, though, when you guys did not come back and talk to us.
Didn't, we bid it out? We were beat by a lot of money, by a huge company. Augusta Fuel that's have sold out to Dead River Oil Company. We were told and on your bid, it said that so many gallons and it didn't say on your bid that you're putting heat pumps in every building. And, and, and your bid was, read your bid and it was guaranteed. If you didn't use it, tough luck. I gotta eat it. I gotta buy it. Not happening.
What was the letter that we got from them? Was that in regards to that RFP?
Letter?
From, uh,
I mean, I'm not here to start a big stink, but I, I, I'm here.
Was it from?
Give me a copy of this.
He's got a copy of it. He signed it.
I'll send everyone a copy.
Yeah. Can I have my copy back, Roy, or would?
I haven't read it yet, Dicky. I haven't read it yet.
Pardon me?
I haven't read it yet.
Okay, we'll let you read it.
We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Start a stink, but I'm here because it's not fair and it's not right. And it's not fair to the taxpayers of Town Winthrop. The other thing, Roy, or council members? I took my truck and I went from the highway department, okay? And I drove up there, up to my facility and I drove back. And I went up there and I drove up to the town, uh, state DOT garage and I drove back. You know what the difference is? Now, I was blown out of the water, huh? One mile. So every vehicle you're sending up there, you don't believe me? Get in your car and try it tomorrow. It's one mile difference. And I, I figured it'd be two or three tenths of a mile, but it's one mile. You've got a fire department, for God's sakes, right across the street from me. You know, and they're telling me, yeah, you're, you're firemen and, and people are telling me that the town manager gave us all cards and said, you've got to go to the town office. I asked them, I said, have you been cleared to come to my facility? No, we got a card. We haven't been told.
As I understood it, it was clearly an option. And it was an option for the fact that you've canceled the fuel, the gasoline bid. When, uh, you know, if we had a, any sort of comp, you know, argument confrontation, we're exactly what you said. If you shut the pumps off to the Town of Winthrop.
Never did.
You never, you never did, you never have.
Pumped off. I got a call from your fire department one night.
I understand.
Did you shut the pumps off? We need fuel. I said, I would never do that.
No.
Never.
I understand that you never did, but if you, you know, I think the fear is pulling, you know, you, you got the gasoline contract.
No, no, I don't have it.
No, you did.
Yeah.
You did get the gasoline contract and you said, no, we don't want it.
I didn't want the contract, the way the contract was written.
Why didn't you come to us and say that then is my question?
Because I deal with this guy here, or try to.
Okay.
He's the town manager. He's supposed to be taking care of the town's business.
You're going to.
Not leaving the town at risk. He's not doing his job. Smile all you want, Anthony. I'm sorry, uh, but I'm not happy about it. I don't think it's fair and I don't think it's right to the taxpayers of Town Winthrop. You buy your diesel from me, you buy it and pay $2 a gallon more, whatever you want to do. But I'm just telling you right now, it's not right and it's not fair to the taxpayer.
I think it's all of our intent to use, uh, A, local people, use Winthrop Fuel. Um, with a, with a competitive, obviously on diesel fuel, you've been more than competitive.
Well, why are you keeping going on the ambulance and the fire and, and, and he's the only guy that had enough smarts to say, with, look, it's 50 to 70 cents a gallon cheaper. We're going up to Dicky's, we're not going up there.
As far as I knew.
See, you guys want to save money. You're all about saving money. Say, that's a lot of money, Roy, over the course of a year.
As I understood it, that we were, the, 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 uh, DOT garage was an option. If for some reason, and I'm not saying that you're going to, but if for some reason Winthrop Fuel wasn't an option, we have an option with DOT. And, and it's to make sure that we are not left in the dark. It's to make sure that we have an option.
That's because nobody had the courage to come and talk to me about it. They just assumed, Roy. You think I'm going to shut off the town I lived in, the fire department? I was a fireman for 21 years and you think I'm going to shut them off and let these people that, that, that are friends and neighbors and relatives and shut them off in an emergency or any situation? I'm in business in town? Now, how would that fly? Come on, Roy, you're smarter than that.
I'm not saying you, I'm not saying you're going to, I'm just saying.
I would never do that, Roy.
Simply an option and another, so to, to, as a backup is, is the, how we, that I intended, that I thought that DOT was going to be used as a backup. If, if not all else fails, we have the ability to use, get fuel up there.
Employees, what they were told. Ask them about the cards they were handed. Ask them what they were told. Anthony, what did you tell them? Anthony, what did you tell the town employees?
Selecting. Um, I just, yeah, I mean, I wish you or Bennett had come up. I know that you'd had the issues, but as far as administrative stuff, we can't do something if it's not brought to us, right? We can't interfere with the town administration. And I know you've been here a long time.
I've dealt with town managers.
Oh, I know.
My whole life.
I know.
In this town, we've always got along. We've always had a good reputation. We've always helped one another out in, 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 in time of goods, in time of bads. We've always worked together and I want to work together with my town. It's pride. I don't care about the money. There's, there's not much money in it. Trust me, there's not much money in it.
I know, it's, it's small.
When you get upset by somebody coming and not being upfront and, and, and coming to us and coming to me and saying, hey, you know, just assuming that, hey, they're going to shut the diesel off. Come on, you people are smarter than that. Any more questions? I probably said enough, probably going to be divorced tonight, but that's okay.
Oh, don't worry, Dicky. I, I was under the impression that we had a contact with, contract with DOT that, um, was more than competitive than the prices you offered. And I just read that contract and that's nothing I would have signed. There's no real contract there. There are no price guarantees. Uh, there are no supply guarantees.
No, typically what happens that I've seen.
I, I'm just telling you.
Oil all over the state of Maine and, and other municipalities. And what they're, the, the state, what they're trying to do is they're, they're sharing their expense of their, 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 their depot. And you can't blame them. I mean, they've got taxpayers too, but that's what they're doing. You know?
No, uh, just, just out of curiosity, how do you, how do you set the diesel price? Is it over like rack, over rack price, like, like a gasoline?
Every time we get a load in, it goes up, goes up, goes down, goes down. We watch the market. If the market's cheap and it's starting to go up, we get down, not all the time, but we try to keep our price down. Town's not the only one that gets fuel there. This is quite a few other people that buy their fuel there because it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And it's, you don't need a card. You push buttons. And off you go. And I've always told the guys, like when we had an ice storm or a big blizzard, the highway foreman, I've always said, if you get there and my generator runs out of gas, you've got my cell phone number. You call me and I'll come right up and I'll start it right up. It's never happened, but you know, we've, we have guys that take care of it. That's the first thing that's plowed and taken care of because we had ambulances and fire trucks. And that, that, my whole crew knows that place gets done before anything gets done, that place. And we take a lot of pride in what we do. And we're, we're proud to serve the Town of Winthrop. And I think we've done a damn good job over the years. Any other questions? Anybody know any good divorce lawyers?
I don't think you'll need one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Thanks, Dick.
Moving on to item 175, discussion and consideration of the charter revision process. Also at last week's, our last council meeting, there was discussion about updating our town charter. It was last amended in 2007. Also of note, uh, there is, uh, in 2008, an update by the state as far as how the school budgets are to be passed. So that is something that does also need to be amended, um, but.
Within our charter, right? Is it what you're saying?
Yes, so there was a, a statement, I don't know if you want to discuss about that.
So we last amended the charter, 2007, 2008, legislature passed a law dictating how school budgets are to be approved, including municipal school budgets. It's a completely different process than what is in our charter because that law took effect in 2008. So for the last 17 years, we've been out of alignment with state law and the approval of the school budget. So it's just, it's just one thing that we need to review and revise through this process.
We have adopted that process, correct, as practical matter.
So, uh, just spoke with the town attorney about this today and, and he said, yeah, state law takes precedence. So when we, this year, this coming year, go to pass a municipal school department budget, we'll be following state law as opposed to what our charter calls for.
You specify the difference?
I was going to say, what's the difference between them?
So, you know, right now, I think there's what, like seven or eight different, uh, cost centers, line items, uh, in the, in the charter. Uh, and you recall that last year you discussed a lot of those with, uh, with the superintendent. And there's actually 11 now that's, that's dictated by, um, state law. And so the difference is, is that you folks get to approve a bottom line figure for the school budget, but the school board is the one that determines how that's allocated among those 11 cost centers. And so for instance, let's just say they brought a $1 million budget to you. Obviously that's, the school budget's much more than that. And you said, well, we'd like this reduced by 2%. They go back, they reduce it by 2%, but you don't get to say, we want those cuts to occur here and here and here. The school board makes those determinations. So in that regard, your approval of the school budget is much like, um, the voters' approval of the school budget. It's thumbs up or thumbs down. And if it's thumbs down, here's, here's how much we want this bottom line figure to read.
So like, uh, are you saying this year's upcoming budget, we're not going to see any of the line, line items or?
Well, no. So, so I would anticipate that in order to explain how the school district got to that bottom line, there'll be some outline in that regard. But you can't say, well, we would like the special education warrant to be cut by this amount, or we want the facility maintenance budget to be cut by this amount. The only authority that you have is to say, this is what we want the bottom line figure to be.
So can we rewrite that charter to ask explanation of why an item went up?
I don't know. That'd be a question for the attorney.
Because, I mean, if I'm asking, why are we going up in X? I mean, I, I'm not picking on any department, but saying we need to, I'm going to just pick sports. I'm a sports person, but maybe, you know, but so why are we increasing that justification for why this went up? You know, be nice to know or be able to ask that question, you know, fairly, just to say, you went up 60% on this, this, this line item or this department, why?
Yeah. So, so as part of the, the charter revision process, the MMA recommends that you work very closely with the town's attorney just to ensure that, one, that your, uh, that your charter is in alignment with state law and the state constitution. And two, that it shows the intent that you, that you sort of curry from the process.
For, for purpose of this item that we're talking about, 175, I mean, I think it's, it's overdue. I think we needed to look at the charter and we needed to discuss it. So I'm in, I'm in favor and I'm, I'm happy if nobody else wants to make any more discussions, so we, we go ahead and make a motion for that. So.
Something.
And I move to approve the referendum question for the June ballot, asking for the voters to establish a charter commission to revise the charter.
Discussion.
Discussion.
And I'm in favor as long as we add the code so that as it pertains to the school budget.
Yeah.
I'm up within the prospect.
Included. Now, also with this, um, it says that with the referendum, the next referendum that we would be having will be. Included. Now, also with this, it says that with the referendum, the next referendum that we would be having will be in June. So it would show up on that and we can have one municipal officer be on that board or committee. And then we must appoint at least three, generally six. That would be included underneath that referendum in June. And I would like to just make a recommendation to have Counselor White, the R, elected counselor for that. As it was, that's just in the last, last meeting that you.
I second that.
On the council. So it's a one to two year process. You will still be at least on the council, I'd say.
I'll be back.
I don't know if that's something that we would include.
We could have just drafted.
So the other thing to consider is, as Shannon mentioned, you have up to six voter members elected by the voters, just like they elect council members. And so there's two ways to go about that. You can have those people on that June ballot. Or you could go ahead and get the approval from the voters to proceed with the revision process or to form a, a charter commission in June and then follow up in the November election with the election of the, the voter member. So there are two different ways to go about that. And again, all of that is outlined by state law.
Do we put out application?
Yes, you would, you would have nomination papers, just like you would any other elected office.
Yep. Probably sooner. And then would that still be a process that Roy and?
No, no, this is, people are running for office. They're not appoint, they're, they're.
Voted by the townspeople.
Yeah.
How do we get them on there?
Well, we, we advertise for the fact that we're looking for people to run for the, to serve on the, on the charter commission. It could be, yeah. Yeah. And you elect up to six.
And I would be up for having them voted on in June, not waiting till November. Yeah.
Everything get that established. So there's been a motion by James and a second by Roy to approve a referendum question for the June ballot.
I'm not going to vote for it unless the sense is limited to the school budget, as it pertains to the school budget.
Include that.
The charter, the referent, you change the charter as it.
To reflect state law.
To reflect state law as a school budget only. I don't want to get into a scenario where everybody wants to change the charter about something else.
This would be a complete revision of the charter. This would be a line by line revision.
Just to review it. And there, and there may be, there may be other parts of the charter that are not in alignment with state law. So that's part of the processes.
And I'm assuming there's going to be public hearings and all that stuff involved with this.
Continues down.
Yeah.
All right. So all in favor? For this? All in favor? All opposed? All right. One Wes opposed. Item 176, consideration of dispersment warrants.
I move to approve the dispersment warrants as presented.
I can.
All in favor? True? All are in favor. Thank you. Item 177, consideration of recommendations from the appointments committee. And it looks like we have one.
Yes. I would like to recommend appointing, or I would like to move to appoint Pat Ladd to the comprehensive plan implementation committee.
I'll second.
Questions for her?
All in favor? All are in favor. So we will open it up to any public comment. Is there anyone online or in the audience that has any public comment? Okay, we will.
I would like to say something if I could during public comment. As a taxpayer. I would like to just thank everybody for their votes over our past election. And I, it is unfortunate that I have to bring this up, but as I see our town slowly disintegrate, where we ignore lifelong residents that have provided us with services and just completely disrespected many of our town residents here through not confirming back through emails, not responding back and just generalized schmarmy type tactics. I think it's uncalled for. And I think that we should all be aware of what's going on and have your eyes opened. It's unfortunate that I have to make that comment, but lies and deceitfulness are not the way to, to have full transparency in our town government.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll turn it over to the town manager for the town manager's report.
So I, I looked through my emails real quick. And on February the 13th, I actually authorized Affinity to install that light at Island Park and Route 202 at a cost of $1,600. So I will remind Steve and his team of that tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Speaking of installations, we looked into possibly installing some security cameras at Norcrossport. The cost would be about $7,000. So there is a grant opportunity through the main municipal association, a risk reduction grant of $3,000 that would, you know, bring that cost down, the cost of the town to about $4,000. However, that risk reduction grant isn't awarded until next October. So the question to you folks is, do you want to wait and apply for the grant and get the $3,000 to apply to the cameras or pursue it now?
And with, with that, I guess my question is, is what's the plan for what it would look like? With security cameras? Yes, at that cost.
So I'll be happy to, at the next meeting, bring back to you the.
Or you can just email. I'm just kind of curious because there's always some vandalism happening down there and it's really hard for us, I mean, I catch them on camera and it's probably recorded, which is, you know, fantastic, right? But I'd like to have something that's, I don't know, hidden, so speak.
Yeah.
And I don't want it to be out plain view. I mean, we can post that as being surveillance, but I don't want the cameras to be at, 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 at risk of being damaged every time. And we got to go back and, and fix these things. I'm not willing to spend some money. I mean, I've, game cameras are pretty cheap and you hide them in the trees and they, they blend right in and people don't know who they are and SD card on there and yada, yada, yada. But at a cheaper cost. So I'm willing to explore this a little bit because I think that something needs to be done down there, but I don't know if I want to spend the money on it right, right off.
Right. Well, I may have, so Bill Sullivan, who's our dispatch supervisor, is the one who actually gathered the, the quotes. And so I may have him come and sort of explain the, all the details of, of what would be involved.
Thank you.
My question was exactly how comprehensive is this, is this system going to be? And, you know, I would like to, myself, if we're going to do something, I would like to be, to Jim's point, fairly aggressive on it as far as, you know, making sure, I mean, if we got people down there damaging the cameras, let's set up, let's set up some cameras pointed at the cameras so that we can try to curb this behavior and stop any vandalism down there and costing the town money.
My guess is, given the price point on this, that it would be like a CC or a closed, you know, circuit straight to the police department.
Yeah, the, the intent would be that they'd be able to be monitored, much like the cameras in the schools are. So just a reminder, we have December meetings on the second and the 16th. We have another poverty abatement application. And so if we do that on the second, do you folks want to do that at the beginning or the end of your meeting? Last time we did it at the beginning. Okay. So maybe we schedule that from 6:00 to 6:30 and then the public portion of the meeting will begin at 6:30. All right. Very good. And then lastly, tomorrow, not tomorrow, Wednesday, I'll be attending the legislative policy committee as part of the main municipal association. And just so you folks are aware, these are the things that are on the agenda. Doesn't mean that all of these are going to be part of the legislative agenda for the MMA, but these are the things that are under consideration at this point. There's a proposal that we increase the homestead or seek to have the legislature increase the homestead exemption to $50,000 with either a 90 or 100% reimbursement to the town. So what happens now is the homestead exemption that everyone gets, right now, we get back 76% of those monies from the state. So increase it to $50,000 and then, and then increase it, you know, either 90 or 100% of, of what the, what the towns relinquish or forego. There is a proposal to have a 1% meals and lodging tax revenue come back to the towns where that tax was originated. So if a local restaurant sells a meal, whatever the taxes on that, the 1% would come back to the town of Winthrop. That's a possibility. We're looking at the possibility of allowing municipalities to use tip funds or municipal buildings. More county jail funding, as we talked about with our friends at the county before. A non-residential justice academy. So right now, the, the police academy is 18 weeks. And if you're a cadet there, you're there overnight, Monday through Friday, and then you get to go home on the weekends. And so there's a proposal to allow people to go home each night. And I've heard pros and cons for both of that. I mean, quite frankly, our police chief, our police lieutenant feel, feel like that the way that the academy is run now is a good proving ground as to whether or not someone's actually going to make it in that profession.
The only ones that do it that way, at least that I'm aware of in New England.
Maybe so. I'm not positive about that, but.
Not great.
Let's see. Oh, ambulance billing for services versus for transportation. That's something that's on the, on the table. Increased general assistance reimbursement and the state funding 100% of special education costs. Because you can only have a couple of students who really run up the, the bill for a school district in special education. So those are the things that are going to be on the table. I would suspect that probably two or three of those will, will be, yeah. The ones that the legislative policy committee will, will vote on. And then, and then they'll start lobbying the legislature on that. That's, that's all I had to say.
Have any questions, comments from the council? I'll start with Bruce real quick and then James.
Hopefully we've learned our lesson from government salvage.com. We're not a huge municipality. I think the frequency with which we exchange and eliminate vehicles out of our service area can certainly prompt us to get a little bit more money. You all received my email and expressing my displeasures where, you know, the NADA blue book value on the last cruiser was $11,000. The last time before this brainiac idea came in with the government surplus was to put it on our social media pages. And there's enough members of our community that are interested in those types of things that can still participate and get involved. I just don't think that's really good. And I don't like seeing us lose four to $5,000 every time we exchange a vehicle. It's reckless spending.
Now, last year, Anthony did send out an email regarding the divestment of surplus property. And maybe that's something that we could look at in doing a policy? Is that something?
Yeah, sure.
I know we were very busy last year with a lot of different things going.
So Anthony, a couple of things, or Shannon, I'd like to get back to us, and we haven't talked about it. And I, again, I apologize about, I'd like to get back to us about pay bands being fair and where we're at with that sort of thing. So.
Sorry, what was that again?
Pay bands. I talked.
Salary schedules.
Salary schedules.
He, okay.
And just, and just gets to that point. The other thing is, want to look at our, I know she, because I'm reviewing the, the warrants and what we spend out in GA is still just pretty outlandish. It's kind of crazy what's required, but what's the process, is it getting any better with our part-time employee? I know you, you're an advocate for that, but I, I just wondering, because we were going to review that after six months. So I'd like to have that be on our, our agenda, just to review and have a discussion around that. So just a couple of quick thoughts. Thanks.
Jim, were you talking about the GA employee?
Yes.
Okay. So I've had some communications with the ZISC house, primarily because I've had some really good luck hiring some day labor through there, the good people, reasonable cost. And they told me that they only had four people on GA at this point because they really pushed them to work. And it's, then later I heard seven. So I too am wondering, do we still need the full-time position?
Yeah, I'm not.
If that's a fact.
I'm not going after any house or anybody in particular of like the GA. I'm just saying, I'm just wanting just to have us review the, review it after the six months as we discussed it. So.
That's my point. And we might find that there's no need.
So I'll be happy to have our GA administrator, Judy Martin, come to the next meeting and Linda Filer as well, and they can speak to the, to the workload.
Anything else from any other councilor?
I think it would also be advisable to review all the peripheral employees, the assistant, the town planner, everybody that we had spoken about and their positions and how much we're paying them and reviewing their progress. I know Counselor Wes had had some questions about the time spent to help code enforcement and then get diverted sometimes and no figure was actually given. So I would like to get some closure on that and also review that at your convenience, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Great. Sorry, into adjourn the meeting.
Should do it there.
Second.
All in favor? 7:46. All right. Thank you. We will adjourn the meeting at 7:40.
Anthony, Anthony, said they were adjourned, but were you, were you going to have Zach?
Yeah. Let's, let's see what be, what would be the best way to do.
Thought that didn't usually happen until the first meeting of the year, the new year. It really. Oh, you get to be on YouTube, Zach. Oh, hell, I got, heck, I got to do it too.
And state law requires, do I need to come to the podium?
Yeah.
At the podium.
What, my hand on Bible or something? All right.
Review step up.
Okay. It's in motion, right? So.
All right. Okay. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Zachary Steele.
I, Zachary Steele.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue there a citizen of.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I.
Zachary Steele.
Zachary Steele.
Do swear that I will faithfully discharge.
Do swear that I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As a member of the town council.
As a member of the town council.
For the municipality of Winthrop.
For the municipality of Winthrop.
According to the constitution and laws of the state.
According to the constitution and laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
With liberty and fraternity for all.
We're going to, oh, we do this? No, no.
Easier to go into the army.
Formalities, right? One of the pens, yeah.
Yep. Figure that out. Oh, wait.
Is it that? Boom. All right. I got you. So signature date. Okay. What's the 18th, right?
Yep.
I'll be honest with you. I've lost all track. So.
You have diabetes?
It's a lot more pressure up here than you think it is, right? It's just repeating back.
I gotta do something else first here.
I tried to reach you.
Oh, I know. I've been busy. We went up, we went to camp and then, yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, say I'm looking forward to working with.
Well, yeah, I am too. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, I am too. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, geez. Well, I'm ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. He's taller than me.
I.
I.
Anthony West.
Anthony West.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. So help me God.
I.
I.
Anthony West.
Anthony West.
Got it ready. There you go. Do swear.
Where?
That I faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
A member of the town.
As a member of the town council.
For the municipality of Winthrop.
For the municipality of Winthrop.
According to the constitution.
According to the constitution.
Laws of the state.
And laws of the state. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Anthony.
Oh, oh, if we. Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Screenshot. I have one of you. Yeah. Smiles are good.
Okay, here, quick, quick for the, for the, for the camera.
Oh, for the camera. Got it.
Thanks, Ian.